All right. Well, welcome. Thank you for coming.
And I'll step in a little bit here, too. So today we provided opportunity for Dr. Vicky Marillo to come. An overview of the program that Council Bluffs has partnered with us on. For those of you that might remember, she was with us last summer when we made this announcement with the governor on how we were using some of our funds. So there was an ask to get an update about their program and we were thrilled that they could come here in person and talk about the work that they're doing. We are very grateful for their partnership. We are excited about what we can learn and I'm going to let Dr. Marillo introduce your team.
Oh, great. Thank you, Dr. Lebo. I have with me Mr. Chris LaFerla. Chris is our Chief Executive Officer over our Schools Foundation and also our school board president. And so plays dual roles, has dual email accounts, but just is leadership in the work that we've been doing. And to my left is Dr. Tracy Matthews, who is my Chief of Elementary Schools, preschool through fifth grade. And so they're going to really join in on the presentation today and just really excited and thankful for this partnership. It is really some good work that's going to take place and the partnership with the Department of Ed and the grant from the governor has really helped as possible. So we're super excited. As you can see there, really what we've kind of themed this around is creating a better future for our children, families and community. And really looking at, this is kind of a rendering of what the outside of the building will look like. Next slide. What we'll be kind of giving an overview on today is really when we begin to look at preschool and really wanting to make preschool have a universal access for all students in Council Bluffs to have access to preschool. So our theme has been around universal access and really making sure that happens. We'll also talk a little bit about the birth to three model. This is something really new. And this is the partnership that we are establishing with the Department of Ed and some collaboration with the University of Kansas that Dr. Matthews is going to talk about. And then really meeting, how do we meet the growing need for childcare? We know that is a hot topic right now, almost in every state across the nation and really meeting those needs. And then one really unique piece around Council Bluffs that our governor has really stated that she admires is our ability to use private and public funds and how we're able to raise those. And then a little bit about our pathways. We have what we call a diploma plus one pathway. And talking a little bit about the future teachers and how we're recruiting students to become teachers and put them in those pathways. So Dr. Matthews?
Thank you, Dr. Marillo, and thank you all for the time and opportunity to share with you today. I will be going over a little bit about the work we've started with our partnerships, talk about our current curriculum and programming with the assessment we use and how that might fit with the birth to three addition. And then the the goal assessment that we use and then just an overview of the classroom. So if I could have the next slide, please. We are just thrilled to have the opportunity to partner with the Iowa Department of Education and Juniper Gardens out of Kansas University. We really know that this collaboration with these expert consultants is going to make a difference for this program. And the work we've done thus far is really gathered some shared meaning around MTSS. So really looking at that multi-tiered systems of support and what that looks like in a birth through five-year-old setting. We're very familiar with the preschool through 12th grade plus aspect of it, but the birth to three is new. So we started studying some books together so that we could have some shared meaning. And then our next steps will be around a needs assessment. So really determining what the needs are for our communities, childcare and education, and then addressing what barriers we might see. So we're really excited to have that collaboration and that support as we develop this strategic plan to make sure that we are meeting all of the needs of the children and families in our care at this early learning center. Next slide, please. Thank you. So the thoughtful design of the Early Learning Center is really going to support the framework that young children learn through active play. This is not new information. That is what is embedded in the work in our 32 existing preschool classrooms. And we currently use the Highscope framework to support that because they really believe in the using a program to ignite children's interests through play, really building on their learning based on what they're attracted to, what draws their attention and incorporating those developmental skills. We know how important it is that they can explore and learn through interactions with peers and with adults. So having those trusting relationships as we look at building academic skills, but also those social and developmental skills as well. So we are just really excited about establishing that foundation and the work that we've already done in our preschool classrooms and what we've learned from that. And we're fortunate because in our early exploration, Highscope does also have an infant toddler framework and program that aligns really well with that and with establishing those supportive trusting relationships with children. And we know at that early infancy stage, that is the most important foundation is that trusting relationship so that they feel they can go to that caring adult to meet their needs and then also to provide that academic foundation for them. So we're really excited just to create those rich environments that encourage very young children to explore and discover the world around them. Next, please. Thank you. So that leads us into our assessment and we are so thankful that the the state of Iowa recognizes Teaching Strategies Gold as the assessment that is utilized for our statewide voluntary preschool programming for four-year-olds. We have also elected to use this for all three-year-olds enrolled in our programming because it really offers a nice progression of skills in 38 different objectives. So this is just one snapshot of one domain under an objective. And it shows how the the skills progress from birth all the way. They do go through third grade. This shows through five-year-old because that's where our focus is. But this allows teachers the opportunity to assess students through observation. And that is really the best way to assess young children because we want to make sure that we are getting a snapshot of how they're performing in those active play settings and in those natural learning environments. So teachers are constantly taking notes and collecting data on these different progressions to see where students are and to adjust the amount of support and scaffolding they might need if they're a little bit behind or to provide extra challenges if they're ahead. So each of the colors that you see there are a band that represent an age level. And they overlap because we know that as a progression of skills, children who are, you know, turning one and maybe one and a half might have an overlap of skills. So that red band is really that birth to one and then orange is that one to two-year-old year and so on. And this is just an example of a literacy objective where it's talking about how children become interested in print and its uses. And really looking at how that progresses from, you know, a young infant or an older infant, young toddler, just pulling a book off the shelf and bringing it to an adult to read. That's kind of that foundation we would look for at that age. And then progressing that skill to, oh, now I recognize that I I like this book because I know what title it is. This is corduroy. Can you read this book to me? I recognize it. And then it further progresses now in preschool years. We're looking at concepts about print and reading left to right. And where's the title? Where's the cover page? What's an author and illustrator? And then finally to using books for their intended purpose. I I noticed really interesting bugs out on the playground. We have a nonfiction book about bugs in one of our centers. I want to learn more about that. I'm going to pull that book off the shelf. So that's just one example of how we look at these progressions through our assessment that we already use. And we know that that will fit really well at the Early Learning Center with our young learners, too. And finally, I just wanted to talk about the classrooms that we will provide at the Early Learning Center. We are so excited to be able to open 14 new classrooms to students and families in our community. We are piloting just to start with one infant classroom, one younger toddler classroom and one older toddler classroom with the majority of our classrooms being devoted to preschool, as Dr. Marillo said, really focusing on that universal preschool access. But knowing that we have opportunities as we progress to flex and and maybe have more infant toddler rooms as we see success there and making sure that we can continue to meet the needs of those who are aging out of the toddler program, serving them in preschool as three-year-olds as well and having some multi-age classrooms.
So I was going to ask, where are your three-year-olds in there? Are they in?
They're in preschool. Yes, they are considered preschool. So right now we serve about 125 to 143-year-olds already in multi-age classrooms in our preschools and we would continue that at the center. Great question. So what you will see in the next slides is Dr. Marillo will share with you the site plan and floor plan. So you'll be able to see where those classrooms are and some beautiful renderings of the facilities.
How do students apply or head into these programs? Because I'm assuming that there's probably more people would like to get in that space for them.
Correct. So we already have an established screening process that we use and we have a formula that determines eligibility based on what's called the ages and stages questionnaire. So that's a developmental screening tool. And we use the ages and stages three and the social emotional tool for that as well as family income and then other developmental needs. If there are other risk factors in the home such as being born to a parent in high school who has not yet graduated, being born in a to a parent who cannot read or if a parent has been in prison, just looking at different risk factors that are reported that way.
Is DHS involved with this?
They are. We are very excited to be partnering with DHS. So we will be DHS licensed and we're collaborating with them to meet all of their accreditation criteria and standards.
Since you're bringing in infants, I'm assuming that there's probably some home instruction or intervention or guidance or support.
We have, you'll see a wonderful multipurpose room as well that we plan to have a lot of family engagement and parenting classes and opportunities as well as we already have home visits embedded in our preschool programs and that will be prevalent in our birth to three as well.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, thank you. Great questions.
And to follow up on John's great questions, he always asks great questions. Part of the purpose of this project is to learn more about all those things, this project like this, so that we could replicate them going forward in other communities. That's that's the reason behind the funding. And so all those things that that are questions when you start something new like this are really inherent in the project itself.
And we are learning a lot about that birth to three component, but those are definitely considerations that we've taken and and we'll continue to learn and see what other changes might be needed for that younger population.
And the changes aren't meant to exclude even anything we would have to ask for legislatively. If there's a change in statute, that's part of the purpose of this as well. What are the barriers that are preventing other places from doing the same type of model? So that's all inherent as part of the project also.
Those, this is kind of for them to come in and they can come, you know, birth and then stay until age five or until they go to kindergarten, right? So this is all the way birth through preschool and everything and then, okay.
That's wow, that's pretty amazing.
And we will have before and after school care and wraparound services as well for all ages. It will look a little different for our birth to three. They'll stay in those smaller, their classrooms versus our three and four-year-olds that can talk about kids and serving them before and after school as well.
But what about summer? Will you have summer sessions?
So we're still working through what summer will look like. For our four-year-olds currently, we have 32 classrooms right now. And we have a classroom at a Catholic school then, and we also have a classroom at the YMCA. And we still have a waitlist. So and then we do have some, of course, some in-home care for preschool in our community. But Mr. LaFerla will talk about how some of those are starting to shut down. The pandemic really hurt that ability to offer that. And so right now our four-year-olds are on the school calendar. What we're really worried about is kind of that birth to three and what that school calendar would look like for them, for those parents, because that is childcare so they can work. So we're still working through the model. I think once we feel really comfortable around the curricular side of it and how we're going to implement that and what it'll look like and how what we will stage because our certification to run before and after school is really just for our three and four-year-olds and really focuses on four is where we're, we have that clearance right now. So what we may have to do is look at how do we stagger the work schedule of teachers that are certified to be in those classrooms? So have some start early, then a midsection and then one that stays late so that we do have those certified staff that are there. And again, that's still the work that we're working through as we learn more and the partnership with the Department of Ed and the University of Kansas.
Are you dealing with employers interested in second shift daycare?
So far, we haven't received that, have we?
There are a lot of conversations in childcare space. The Iowa Women's Fund is leading some initiatives across across Iowa. And there is a committee of constituents that are working on several of the childcare task force initiatives in Potomac County. And one of them is that second shift. It's, there's a, there's a lot, it sounds like there's a lot of need that we're hearing from businesses, but and having enough to actually support a full childcare center in the scheduling and the staffing that it would take to do that, you know, that's the tricky.
In my part of the state, there's a the Greater Dubuque Development is looking at facilitating employers in an industrial park, contributing a facility and then having the private or public providers staff it and the employers help fund it. I was just wondering, this is so far beyond that, if if that was an issue for you, too?
Mr. LaFerla and I are part of a childcare collaborative in our county. And so we are exploring those partnerships and like you mentioned, partnering with businesses and what that might look like as far as at the center, not at this time. But we're definitely working with our community on.
I mean, there's. Looking for information.
Yeah, and I think we'll continue to learn.
Yeah, thank you.
So I'll go into the site map with you for just a few minutes. It was really, really exciting when we got the call from the Department of Ed and the governor to talk about this partnership. When I got to Council Bluffs in 2017, it was, an Early Learning Center was on my radar. And we kind of paused it because I knew there was some attention that needed to happen to our middle school. And so what you're seeing here, this plot of land, we had a closed elementary school that was sitting there, Tinley Elementary. So the great piece for us, it was in the center of our school district in a high-needs area. And we demoed the building and the land set for about a year and a half or two years. And what you're seeing here is the Early Learning Center fits perfectly. The circles that you see at the far left of that screen, my left, I could be your right. I'm not sure on the directions. But it has the outdoor play and learn area that Dr. Matthews talked about. The small circle over to the right will be that birth to three kind of area that we'll set aside for them. And then you have two bigger areas that we will have in place. And behind there in that green space will be a lot of climb, you know, things that they can climb on, tunnels they can go through and just really excited about that. The other piece is the support from our community and our city. The small parking lot you see there, there were some homes there that were kind of abandoned. And we reached out to the city and said, if we'll demo those lots, would you deed those to us? And we'll take care of that. And the city donated that to us.
Wow.
And so we just had to clear them and that gave us the additional parking space to ensure that we were meeting code. And so we were really excited. And when you come across from that upper side across, you're coming across a really nice bridge that comes across and to see that Early Learning Center, and it also sits really close to other areas, Mr. LaFerla.
There's a.
We just had to clear them and that gave us the additional parking space to ensure that we were meeting code. And so we were really excited. And when you come across from that upper side across, you're coming across a really nice bridge that comes across and to see that Early Learning Center, and it also sits really close to other areas, Mr. LaFerla.
There's a human services campus just a couple blocks down the road that is pretty unique in terms of centrally locating many of the human and social service agencies in our community. And Dr. Marillo mentioned it's a high-needs area. This this neighborhood is probably the highest poverty neighborhood in Council Bluffs. And definitely in terms of need for high-quality early childhood education, many of the families that need access to these services the most are in this area.
And so when we began this journey and talking with Dr. Lebo and the governor, talking about, is there an innovation that we can look at through this innovation grant to see what we can use to scale up in a large district to use a model like this and be able to scale it down to a rural size? That's the finding, that's the work, that's the research we're kind of doing around this work to see how how it will really fit in a K-12 system. We began this work looking at edicare. And we don't have an edicare in the state of Iowa and they would love to be in the state of Iowa. But edicare is a very high cost of childcare that is not really sustainable for a K-12 district. So we're going to be edicare-ish without all the high costs. So we're pretty excited about that. Next slide. Next slide, please. There you go. So this kind of shows you those classrooms that Dr. Matthews was talking about. And if you look across the very top and see those light blue, that will be the 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 birth to three kind of area. The infants, the young toddlers, the, and what we've done on that whole row across the top, we're going to make those flexible classrooms, which means that as we continue to grow this infant birth to three model, we can then expand across and they will meet code instead of thinking, well, we just built three rooms. Now, how do we convert? We're getting ahead of that and we're going to ensure that all of those meet the same standards. And then you can see the other classrooms we have in the the large gold rooms. Those are really those meeting spaces that Dr. Matthews spoke to. And you'll see pictures here soon about our mass motor skill. The small motor skill will be for our infants and our toddlers to be in. And then where you see those little white tables, those are our gathering spaces. Those are the areas where we want to not only have real good parent engagement and parent classrooms and those, we also want to provide professional development that we can extend to other small districts and also other private schools and especially those that run preschool in their homes that would come to learn to do better and learn about the curriculum. It's not about this is what we do. It's how do we improve our community? Because what we've done with our MAP assessment, that's our state assessment that we, I mean, I'm sorry, our district assessment that we use and we administer that through NWEA three times. We've been able to find the cohorts of our students that have been in preschool that have come up and when and measure them against students that are not in preschool or not in our preschool. And we are measuring that they are scoring above where those that have not been in preschool. And we're tracking those cohorts to ensure that we know that the work that we're doing, we believe we invest when they're young versus trying to intervene when they're older. And we're starting to really see the the fruits of those labors of doing that. And and Dr. Matthews with Dr. Shudak, who really has done a good job around our data, we are tracking those cohorts of students. And I think that is going to make the difference in the long run to reaching the end goal, which is every student graduating with their high school diploma and a second credential. That's our goal in our district. So we're going to catch it on the front end. So the next slide there.
Question, please. How many infants, how many toddlers, how many kids are in preschool?
Right now?
Who are you? Okay. What are your target numbers?
Right now, we have about 459 four-year-olds. And then we have about 150 three-year-olds. And that gets us right to about, we were looking to be 750-ish or more to be universal access. And that means everyone in Council Bluffs, this four-year-old should have access to preschool. And so that's, that's the goal of our community. So in this, right here in this ma, this building, we will serve about 173. About 173, we can serve up to 30 birth to three-year-olds.
So we'll start those classrooms, the infant classroom will have eight because we'll need to meet that one to four ratio. And then we could have 12 in the older and it depends on ages when we're moving students. We want to be able to be a little bit fluid with that, but typically a one to six classroom for toddlers. When they straddle one to two years old, we have to be careful about that. Sometimes it's one to four, sometimes it's one to six, depending on the the age of your youngest learners in those rooms.
When you said play, you had me. I think that's who I am. And I think as young people, golly sakes, I just think that that has been, especially young boys, that has been so. Well, we we have medicated instead of educated in many cases, I think, little boys. And and so do you have similar space inside? You have a wonderful facility outside.
You'll see it.
Oh, that, right?
Yes.
So that's exciting.
This is our main entrance. Go to the next slide. This is the main corridor as you enter and come through. And you can see it'll be bright, colorful. We're trying to create the hallways for different age groups. We'll have the same colors that you'll follow through. So yellow, blue, green, and then kind of that rose color will be really accented along the way. And I only brought a few pictures. I didn't bring a lot. So I wouldn't just, it'd be like next, this is my grandkid. Do you see? So next, next slide, please. And so this would be like a north corridor and you can see the blue running across and the lines and the curvature and and the classrooms that are that are outside. And this really not only provides a gathering space for a teacher to bring a small group up, but also if students have special needs and we want to work with them one-on-one or if we have parents that want to come up and spend time learning, watching, observing, there'll be lots of windows in there. One part that you will not be able to see, each one of our classrooms has, I'm just trying to make sure I didn't put that on there. Each one of our classrooms, if you look through the doorway, do have access to outdoor, so indoor-outdoor learning experiences. Doors will open. We have, some of the doors will look like garage doors. Some of them will be accordion and some of them will just open. And they will have on the safe space on the bridge side, we will have where it's kind of enclosed and the students can't move beyond and a nice fence. On the other side, if you get that classroom, you will go right out into the corridor of outside. And so very, very exciting. Next slide. Other side, if you get that classroom, you will go right out into the corridor of outside. And so very, very exciting. Next slide. This is the mass motor skill. And you can see they'll be able to ride their trikes, climb a rock wall, go down a slide, they've got stairways, things to climb on. And then you do see where the doors open. So the students can take those trikes and roll right on outside into those big circles that you saw and get on playthings out there. And so just really enjoying and learning as they go in and out and we can set up our lessons to really curtail around that outdoor experience. Next slide, please.
So this is, are your, are your three and four-year-old preschool programs all day or half days?
We have a combination of half-day, three-quarter day and full-day services.
Yeah.
We do expand full-day services to as many four-year-olds as we can. That's a huge goal in our district.
Do you have transportation services involved in that?
We did not.
Okay, okay.
About how many four-year-olds are in the Council Bluffs, the school district out there?
We have about 460, 475 right now.
Okay.
We we were at, we just added 16. We got 16 additional seats from Head Start. So that's kind of pushed us above that 450-something. And so every time they say we have some seats, we couldn't fill in another county, would you like to have them? We said, yes, 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 they'll take them. So we just received 16 and super excited every time we get that offering. And we do have some full pay. We have two classrooms of full pay.
About that, yes. And they're spread throughout the district. So parents who don't meet those eligibility criteria for our grants can elect to pay. I have a preschooler in our programs. I believe in them so much. So I pay tuition to have her attending. So that is an option as well.
Mike had mentioned transportation, which can be a real barrier for, I'm not sure if that's part of the way you can use a grant or not. But it is, it can be a real stumbling block. Another question I have is other resources that come to the center to provide more than just the instruction play, but bringing in another community partners as far as working with these kids.
Yes, we do partner already very closely with Head Start, with West Central Community Action, which provides Head Start in our in our service area. We have Shared Visions grants in our community at some of our locations. So we have extra opportunities for professional development and things like that. We partner with Family Inc., which is another, they have birth to three home visitation services. And so we work closely with them on parent education and also that transition into preschool. And they also are the ones to do like our vision and dental screenings right in the schools and the centers. So we would continue to partner with them on those services as well as the AEA. They do our hearing screenings. So we we collaborate with all those agencies when we do our screening events. And then also throughout the school year, they come to the schools to do those as well.
I see your musical instruments. Do you have, or will you have a music teacher actually come in for a scheduled period of music time?
Not as a music teacher, but we do have music and movement in our schedules in every classroom and preschool. And so it is incorporated daily in their lessons.
So one thing that we thought was really important that they were able to express themselves through music and play. And so on this side, our thoughts are around kind of that sea skyline and creating that kind of amphitheater outside, but also for storytellers to come in and and them sit around like they're on the lawn at the outside and and hear that or read about books or poems, poetry that's done. And we just think it's really a great piece for the kids to experience more than just play in a park, but also see how they can learn in that setting, too. So now Mr. LaFerla is going to talk about the best part of all, and that's the kind of our fundraising side.
So I have been leading the fundraising, but my foundation also operates the before and after school childcare. It's a licensed, DHS licensed childcare program out of 10 elementary school buildings. So that'll be relevant for something I'll talk. So that'll be relevant for something I'll talk about here in a minute. But for the, for about nine months, I've been out uh meeting with community members and, I, so I feel at least in part, I'm here representing their, their voice. And I, as a community member myself, um, very appreciative for this partnership. The timing couldn't really be better than, than this. Our community recognizes the importance of quality, early childhood education. But also especially our business community recognizing the, the workforce need out there. And um, that I think is um led to this universal understanding in our, in our community. That this is going to be a transformational project for. Council Bluffs is the third pocket of poverty in the Omaha metro area. Behind two areas of Omaha. And, and we're a high need, we're a high need community and early childhood education, quality childcare. Really has even more significant impact on children and families living in poverty. So this is really going to be beneficial for the Council Bluffs community. And um, if you can move to the next slide, please. I think that's, that's demonstrated in just more like six months of actual fundraising. Uh, we've been able to raise a little over seventeen and a half million dollars. Um, obviously the, the grant um and the district contribution has made an impact. But we have a local donor in Council Bluffs who is our lead donor of four million dollars. And we've received uh significant one million dollar contributions from several Council Bluffs and Omaha area foundations. We have um significant investment coming in from across the river in, in Omaha, which is important for our area. Because there's so much philanthropy in, on that side of the river. One donation that I'd like to point out is from the Sherwood Foundation, which is Susie Buffett's foundation. And, and Susie, many years ago, established the Buffett Early Childhood Institute. They are sort of leading the way, especially in Nebraska in terms of research of best practice, policy development, uh, and just growing the quality childcare uh space in Nebraska and surrounding areas. So their commitment to this project speaks volumes uh to me in terms of recognizing the quality of the childcare programming that our district offers. Um, but also I think it speaks to uh, in our, in our conversations with them. The idea that public schools are uniquely positioned to offer high quality and affordable, cost-effective childcare programming. We're already doing it with preschool, uh, so sharing those resources uh to some younger children just makes sense. Um, if you could move to the next slide, please.
So if, if you establish a foundation yourself for sustainability. Foundation money, I mean, it's great, but you have to sustain this. So.
We do, and Dr. Marillo uh has saved enough to cover operations for at least the first six or seven years. And speaking, speaking now as the school board member. We will make, we will find ways if we need to, to, to fund the operations. What I didn't mention is we've also added a two million dollar endowment on top of the cost of the construction that we'll be raising money for, which will provide some operational support annually. Uh, but from a fundraising standpoint, there are, there, there will be plenty of opportunities to go back to foundations for future years and making multi-year commitments to the, the operational costs. Everyone recognizes how needed uh it is for, for our workforce. I think that's where the primary driver is. You know, I, I, I'm, I fall on the equal librium of this is really good for children and families. That's the, the number one reason we should be doing it. But we know that high cost of quality childcare has forced people out of the workforce. And um, people that are in the workforce that are looking for, for childcare, having a really difficult time finding options. So we've got to figure out a new model and I think that this is a much more sustainable model. Um, we, we've got to figure out, you know, childcare was challenging before COVID. And it forced so many childcare uh agencies to, to close. Uh, and they might not come back because they're operating on such thin margins before that. It's risky to, to try and make that business decision to come back, but um, you know, go ahead, sorry.
I think it's really important for people to understand too, that not only is it important for the families and children right now and the workforce right now. But research shows that children birth to three who have quality developmentally appropriate care graduate at a higher rate, go to college at a higher rate and eventually contribute to the economy at a higher rate than children who don't have that opportunity. And I think that's, that's a, something that most people don't think about. You know, you think about this three-month-old as a blob. And it has to be changed and, you know, rocked. And we don't think that taking appropriate care of that child is going to help the economy.
Right.
Twenty years from then.
Exactly. And, and there's a reduction in the, you know, the negative impacts on society with.
Yes.
Pregnancy incarceration.
Absolutely.
More likely to have a, a man in the home uh, uh, as adults. Uh, there's just so much.
There's so much.
Research that shows it benefits children and families, but your community and yeah. One of the things I wanted to mention about the, the workforce is not only will this open doors for families to, who may have left the workforce because of childcare issues to get back into the workforce. Dr. Marillo mentioned before, her vision of diploma plus, which is that all of our students will graduate from high school with a diploma and another credential. This spring, we're on track for a hundred and seventeen of our seniors to graduate with a high school diploma and a degree or a certificate or a diploma from our local community college. There are many, many different career pathways for students to um, to pursue. And I'm, I'm really underplaying the vision of this diploma plus because that's not why we're here. But it is a game changer for our community. It's sort of reimagining K-12 education. Um, but one of the pathways is an early childhood education passa- pathway, which we just opened up this year. Uh, we have eighteen students on the Iowa Western Community College campus who are earning their um child development associate certificate. And we have also created a registered apprenticeship program for early childhood education. My childcare program, Kids and Company, is part of that registered apprenticeship. So we have students who are earning uh as childcare associates uh with Kids and Company, while also earning credit for their um CDA at Iowa Western Community College. And it really lends itself well to the governor's teacher apprenticeship program. Uh, folds right into exactly what we are trying to do with these work-based learning experiences. That our high school students get the opportunities to take advantage of. So that when they graduate from high school, run a track to uh become employable uh in our community. And childcare workers are a significant need uh across the country, but you know, definitely in Iowa.
Next slide, please. So here you see Mia, who Chris just talked about. Um, and I think the Omaha, one of the news stations there came over. Really reaching out because of the governor's apprenticeship program that she talked about with the teacher and uh teacher apprenticeship program. Mia is in that pathway. And we've applied for the grant uh where we can, you know, for ten parent educators and ten students to be able to go on and have their first two, four years of college paid for. Mia is one of those candidates that, and she's currently working in the apprenticeship, the registered apprenticeship program in the Kids and Company after school. So she earns and learns at the same time. And uh, that's really, really uh a special piece for us. And then our last slide is I'll end uh just by talking, just closing just a little bit here. Next slide, please. Really looking at again what that looks like. And you can see our preschoolers in one of our, our, our buildings there. But what has, what has worked well for us and that uh we have just been positioned in Council Bluffs each time to kind of line up with the movement. Our timing has been good. Uh, we lined up with trades when trades came out and the governor was in one of our trade works in Downing Council Bluffs. And, and the pathways and the diploma plus and what we believe in is every student graduating with a high school diploma and a second credential. And that can be a certificate from Iowa Western, that can be a diploma from Iowa Western, that also can be an associate's or associates for the applied science. This year, we will have a hundred and seventeen that will walk across that stage before they walk across my stage and get their high school diploma. But childcare, we know is critical to the success of the workforce. And the work that we're doing now and the timing of the preschool work with the early learning center and the partnership with the Department of Ed, timing is perfect. It's such a critical need, every community in our state and every state in our nation. And so one thing, the only one ask I would have is that we continue to explore ways to fund preschool beyond a point five. I've uh talked with Brent Seacrest a lot every time I can get his ear. And I say, can we get to a point seven-five? Can we get to a point seven-five with some waiting? Can we get to a one point? And we're really investing young because we can't intervene our way out of this at the end. It's got to be an investment at the beginning. And now the timing is so great that we know there's going to be a teacher shortage. And with the governor stepping up with the apprenticeship now for that program and investing in our young people coming out of high school to go into the teaching profession and our parent educators to get that teaching degree. We are poised and set to continue to deliver high-quality education in the Council Bluffs schools. So thank you very much. And we'll take any other questions you might have.
So exciting. I, I, I just am so excited. I had an opportunity as a member of this board to serve on it, the National Association of State Boards of Education, early childhood task force. And um, so I am such a strong advocate for the birth to um eight-year-old model of early childhood. I have a concern in the state of Iowa that our early childhood efforts are very fragmented. And I'm sure you've had to deal with this, the Department of Human Services, the Department of Education, the Department of Health. The early childhood regions, there are these, to me, that's very fragmented. And what I learned in that other states, and I think Nebraska is a really good example, where a lot of those services and um hoops to jump through are all consolidated in the Department of Ed. And I think because this is an education issue, childcare is an education issue. I really worry in Iowa that we're fragmenting that a little too much. And I hope that my message to this board as I go off, and some of you have heard me preach this in, in the past, is that we continue to keep that on our radar on this board. That um anyway, we can coordinate and consolidate the efforts that go into the early, early childhood education. Needs to be done. It's so important. And I, I just think you guys are doing amazing work. I hope it can be replicated all over the state.
I think that is the goal.
Yeah, and I think your point, Betty, that's why we're helping to fund it. I mean, in the importance of, and when she talks about timing. Again, our money isn't being invested in things that are dependent upon those funds. We're here to accelerate and engage with work that we can learn from. And one of the main things is to understand what barriers are in place. How do we make it easier for more communities to do this? And so that's why we are also very grateful uh for Council Bluffs because they have an opportunity for us to learn from them. And for us to scale this out and make some changes statewide because everybody understands the impact that that has had. And we need to do something different going forward.
We do, absolutely. Thank you.
Just uh echo those thoughts and, and again, uh, my, my concern about establishing a good foundation so that you have additional money. I don't want you to have to wait on the state. Will the state always do the right thing? Probably not. Okay. So you need to be prepared for that, that possibility, the establishment of a good foundation. Certainly help augment uh dollars that you can't get elsewhere. And say hi to Susie Buffett for me. She is unbelievable. Okaboo, just come to Okabooji if you don't believe it.
Well, this is amazing. As a parent of a five-year-old and a two-year-old, this is absolutely incredible. Both my kids are in preschool. I get them in as early as possible. So I think this is amazing, especially for a high-needs area. I also think it's really amazing that you're including wraparound services only for the children, but for the parents as well. Because I think that what parents, especially in high poverty areas, need is more of a one-stop shop. Not, oh, you need this, you need to go here, right? I mean, come here, get everything. I would also like to see include I work for Iowa workforce development. So you know, if they need unemployment insurance, benefits help, or if they need to, you know, help applying for jobs or any of those services, I'd like to see those as well provided. So create with the DHS, but maybe involve IWD in some way as well.
Great suggestion. Thank you.
One thing for future consideration too, that this board, and we'll talk about later today, is where we potentially have some off-site meetings and places to visit. And I, I think based gauging the conversation day, this might be a great place to go have an off-site meeting. So we may want to touch base on time in terms of the, the facilities and the projects where we could come and see some network at the right, um, right time. I'm assuming that would be of interest to this board.
Yes, absolutely. I was thinking on my way out to the zoo sometime, we would stop by. This is all the time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
That's what you're doing.
I don't, I don't know if we'll ever get back on schedule, Don. I don't, I don't think so. Uh, do we have? Yeah. We are still live. Are they, uh, is there? Are we, wait, what are we doing? We're still in. Oh, sorry.
Let's take a quick uh five-minute break, please.
You're half hour behind. Oh, my gosh.
Five minutes.